Commissioner Notes, Commissioner Notes Stein, if you may, lead us in the pledge and the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be an American citizen. May we do our part in keeping it a place others would want to call home. Thank you, Lord, for the beauty you have bestowed upon America. Let us do our part in preserving its splendor. Thank you for the great history of America. May we learn from our failures and glean from the great men and women who made America what it is. Finally, Lord, I pray that you bless the United States of America. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. Your first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held August 7th, 2025.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Are there any guests here concerning county business? Back? Sure, yes. Yes, now.
First, Department of Commerce Commissioners received a request for a change in zoning for an 800-acre parcel owned by North Point in Banks Township.
First off, I'm gonna ask for your name.
George Dunity.
And your address, please.
Six West Market Street, Trespa.
Thank you. Good with that. I am not aware of any said request, and I will check with the solicitor.
No, nothing has come across my desk.
Nothing.
I do a follow-up, and you'll just take a second. Has the Commissioners rezoned or changed the zoning of an 800-acre parcel owned by North Point in Banks Township?
We do not.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
We do not do the zoning changes. That's up to the municipality.
So, the answer's no.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Anyone else? There you go, we move on.
Next item is the proclamation, item number 25483, the Child Support Enforcement Awareness Month. And we have a motion to adopt proclamation number 2025-010.
Motion to adopt, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
You wish to read that now?
I'll be happy to.
Whereas this year celebrates the 50th anniversary of the Title IV D Child Support Enforcement Program, a vital initiative that has significantly improved the lives of countless children by promoting financial stability and accountability among parents. And whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is committed to providing for children and ensuring that they and their parents or caregivers receive the emotional, financial, and medical support they deserve. August is recognized as Child Support Awareness Month, a time to highlight the importance of child support in securing the well-being of children and families across our nation. And whereas Pennsylvania continues its mission to meet or exceed all federal performance standards in the establishment and enforcement of child support orders, parentage establishment, and cost effectiveness. And whereas the dedicated staff of the Domestic Relations Office plays a crucial role in the administration of child support services, working tirelessly to enforce support orders, facilitate communications between parents, and provide resources that empower families. And whereas in the federal fiscal year 2024, the Pennsylvania Child Support Enforcement Program dispersed $1.1 billion to custodial parents, served more than 270,000 families, established parentage for over 40,000 children, and collected over 82% of current support due, exceeding the national average of 65%. And whereas raising awareness about child support issues fosters a greater understanding of the responsibilities parents have to their children, encourages community engagement, and highlights the collaborative efforts between governmental agencies, community organizations, and families. And whereas we must continue to advocate for policies and practices that promote fair child support systems, ensuring that every child has the opportunity to thrive in a stable and nurturing environment. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Commissioners of Carbon County do hereby proclaim August 2025 as Child Support Enforcement Awareness Month in the County of Carbon, and encourage all citizens to recognize the significance of child support in shaping a brighter future for our children. Let us honor the 50th anniversary of the Title IV D Support Enforcement Program by recommitting ourselves to that pursuit of justice, equity, and support for all families, adopted by the Carbon County Board of Commissioners this 21st day of August 2025.
Marla, I do know we have our director here with us today. I don't know if you'd like that.
No, she's not. She, yes.
Yeah, she's here.
She's here.
Sit up, Wayne, sit up. It's had a very long week. If you would like to add a few words? I know you have members of your staff here. Come on up. Oh, right, you can talk to everybody. It's fine, good, yes.
Thank you so much again for.
Tell you what, yeah, there you go. Come up front.
Oh, now, see, now.
Face the camera there, so, there you go. That's better.
Again, for yet another year of accepting August as Child Support Awareness Month. Especially this year, the Commissioners have been super supportive of our office. We hosted our first community outreach program, where we hosted a free swim day at Machamk Lake for Carbon County children ages 18 and under. We did have a successful turnout. It was a little bit of rainy weather. So we're hoping to do it bigger and better next year. I did just want to highlight some quick points of my staff, if you don't mind. So this year does mark the 50th anniversary of the Child Support Program here in Pennsylvania, and it's a significant mile marker in letting everyone know that the Child Support Program works, that it's needed, and that it's not going anywhere. In the last five years, my office has established child support actions for over 2,000 custodial parents and collected over $36 million in, or for families in Carbon County across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and nationwide. What I'm most proud of is that my office continuously far exceeds the National Federal Performance Collection measure of 65% by coming in at around 83% a month, which is super significant. Since stepping into the position as my director two years ago, I've had the honor of joining the Supreme Court Rules Committees and the Legislation Committee with the Domestic Relations Association of Pennsylvania. I get to assist legislation and Supreme Court roles in decision-making, but without my staff, who works diligently and tirelessly, and who plays a crucial role in Carbon County's success and name being on the nationally-recognized map for DREP, it wouldn't be possible. They are the true voices of the families and children of Carbon County. And there's one last thing I just want to mention, and that is, we may be a small office, we may be a small county, but when we show up in numbers, we're super powerful. So thank you so much to the three Commissioners for supporting us this year.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere.
Present this.
Do you want the other staff up here?
Want any of your other staff?
No, I mean.
Oh, boy, they quit sat down now, huh?
No takers.
Thanks a lot. That could be good or bad.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, staff.
Next stop.
Well, thank you and your, all your staff for what you do and some of the difficult people you have to deal with and everything. It's not the most pleasant job at, at times. Almost like ours.
Yeah.
I'd just like to thank you, and I know I've said it before, but I'll say it again. This year, thinking outside the box and having an event with the families at the lake, I think was, is something that is definitely gonna grow, and I thank you for that. Yes. Anything further? That's it.
Our next item is the presentation. Kim Worley, Carbon County's America 250 PA representative, and also Marlin Kistner, the Pocono Mountain Vacation Bureau Vice President, Membership and Community Relations.
Thank you.
Best place to stand. Good morning, and thank you all for being here, and thank you Commissioners for letting me speak. It's been two years now that I've been in this role, so I thought it was a good time to have a little update and tell everyone about the really great things that are happening. And I do want to wish Commissioner Arner a happy birthday. I actually do know his real name because, I mean, his real age, because Rocky and I graduated together in 1976.
And don't forget that we're a lot younger than our other members, because when we were in kindergarten, we were that advanced in education and moved into the seventh grade. So all of our other, all of our other members of our class are seven years younger than us, are older than us.
So, to introduce myself, just in case you don't know, back in 2023, I was appointed by the Commissioners as the County Advisory Board Representative for Carbon County to the America 250 PA Commission. And what that means is next year, in 2026, big year, it's our semi-quintcentennial. The United States is turning 250 years old, and it's epic. It's, it's going to be a big celebration. The Commission has a lot of initiatives that I'm kind of liaison for. And then our county has been, you know, wonderful. And, you know, that being said, I just want to thank some of my supporters for just being here and showing up. We have Dave Sararino. He's on the Steering Committee. Now, I formed a Steering Committee. We have 10 members. And they're from all areas of Carbon County. Dave's from Tolmancen Township, and Carol Etheridge, she is from Weatherly. Okay, so those are two of the steering members. And of course, Marlin Kistner, who is also with the Visitors Bureau, but she's on my Steering Committee, and she has been super helpful. And then I have a supporter, Carol Etheridge, and she's from Mahoney Township. So she just came here to support me, so I want to thank them as well. Okay, so I'm going to update you on some of the things that we're doing, some of the great things. For one thing, we, in our county, got one of the semi-quint's grants. We have $5,000 that was received through the Commission, and it's to Jacobs Weisport Historical Society. And they received a grant to do a big parade, a celebration, on July 4th next year, 2026. You know, Jake couldn't be here today. He probably, you know, talk your ear off about it. If you see this flyer anywhere, this is something he put away around. And I wanted to point out, this is kind of our logo or branding. So if you ever see that, that means that, you know, we probably had something to do with it. So that, that's one great thing, you know, getting the grant and all. The other really great thing is we are moving ahead with our Liberty Bell across PA. Every county is to have a Liberty Bell. We have a sponsorship through the Visitors Bureau. That was a $10,000 sponsorship. We had Lynn Shup from Pomodin design the bell. She went out to artists around the county who took images. Either they, you know, took a picture, or they, you know, painted or whatever. So she took a picture of that and put on the bell as snapshots of Carbon County. And that should be delivered soon and completed, and we're going to do a big unveiling. We decided that a good place in the county to place that would be Weisport Park. And we have a liberty tree there, which was planted about a year and a half ago. If you saw in the Times News, Tamaco may, you know, had a big article and said it's a big deal for Tamaco to get the liberty tree. They, they formed a park. We already have our liberty tree for a while, and it's in Weisport Park. And now this bell will also be in Weisport Park. So I just, you know, when you hear about the unveiling, I encourage you to come out. We hope to do it soon, you know, but there's a couple, you know, steps we have to have. Weisport already signed the agreement that they would be the host for that there. So, Marlin, did you want to say anything about?
Sure. I actually just wanted to let everybody know there is a website. And that website is housed on the Pocono Mountain Visitors site as a microsite. And what we're doing is encouraging everybody who has events and initiatives that are happening to actually add that to our website, so that we can get a full account of events. So at the end of the year, we can put something together so that everybody knows what's happening in 2026. So I did bring along a few handouts with our website, and then also rare deeds of those events, because we want to make sure we capture all of that. The bell was delivered today, so I just got that news. So that's really good to see.
Glad to have that.
She sent us a text right before we got here, so it's at Jet Signs, and that's super exciting. So I just want to thank Kim. She has been doing a great job, leading the charge, and all of our committee members. And we at the Visitors Bureau are 110% backing this and supporting the county to do whatever we can to make it a big celebration and to really celebrate Carbon County. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next I wanted to talk a little bit about sponsorship. Again, with Marlin's Health and the Visitors Bureau, we have a fund, an account, that we are collecting money. We have one sponsorship already. MCT, Machamk Trust, has sponsored us as a platinum sponsor for $1,500. And so that's, that's a big deal. We are doing a couple little fundraisers, so, and we have sponsorship letters out. If anyone here would be willing to take this back to any, their employer, or anyone that you, you know, business that you might feel would be willing to do a sponsor, it doesn't have to be 1,500. This is a letter, and it will go through the Visitors Bureau. And if you have any questions, let me know. So even if you just want to take it and you have a business that you can hand it off and explain a little bit about what we're doing, all the funds will be used towards, you know, the America 250 celebration, whether it be to make something to cover the bell, or, you know, just even if we have money that we can, you know, sort of co-host some of the events that we're going to have, you know, because every community is talking about this at this point. And, and that's so wonderful, and it's just through a lot of hard work of getting the word out. So the sponsorships, you know, letter, I have a packet there that we can give those out, and I would really appreciate anything. The Carbon County Chamber of Commerce I met with too, and they're helping along with giving us, you know, business names and so on. So it's just, it's, it's going along real well. Okay, thanks. So, you know, just talking to the Commissioners, you know, please also promote this through a newsletter, if we have it, or any of your, you know, correspondence that you have. I'm encouraging anybody to come out, and if the Commissioners come out, you know, the Commission, the State Commission wants us to do photo ops with, you know, Commissioners. So you're always invited. I apologize if there's something that I, I negate to, you know, say, oh, you know, I invite you to that. We are having Steering, Steering Committee meetings. They're great. I, you know, I can't say I'm not. They always show up for me and have great ideas. So, you know, come out and, you know, we'll, we'll take pictures or whatever. Some of the really cool, you know, planning events that we have coming up. I've been to the Trail Fest as, you know, doing a booth, Pomodin Festival, which is coming up September 6th. I'm going to be at, just to promote this. We're actually selling food at the Lanceford Concert in the Park. So you see that I'm trying to encompass everything in the county, everybody, bring us together. I'd like to come up with some kind of, like, cohesive, you know, thing that we could do all over the county. As, you know, Professor Note Stein knows that, you know, I went to the Fireman's Association meeting and tried to promote fire hydrant painting throughout the county. I have been calling other organizations, the Pool Pals in Lehighton. Somebody gave me the idea, why don't we do a boat regatta, like a cardboard boat regatta? And they're on board with that, so that's, you know, really exciting. So, you know, there's just a lot of things that are, you know, kind of wheels in motion now. And we only have three, four months, yeah, September, October, November. I, I, so four months till 2026, so it's coming fast. And, you know, it should be not only a July 4th celebration, it's going to be a year-long celebration. The Commission, one of, they have a couple initiatives, and I thought I would just update you on those or tell you about those, coming down from the state level. You know, you might have seen the mobile unit at the Iron Pigs. It's a mobile unit that is interactive, and, you know, you can go in and talk about, they ask you questions about what you remember about 1976, or, or just ask you questions. So that's, that's been around. I requested that for Pomodin Memorial, I mean, Community Festival, and for the Carbon County Fair, and it was already, you know, booked. So I requested it now for the Lanceford Halloween Festival. So keep our fingers crossed that we're, we're going to get that. There's going to be a kickoff rally in January, from what I understand. They're going to come to each of the counties and do a rally with signs and music and things like that. So, you know, I'm just asking the Commissioners if you hear anything. Maybe they would contact you, and you could, you know, just kind of keep me in the loop or whatever. Because from what I understand, they do want to do it in the county seat, you know, and have the county government involved in that. Okay, there are concerts, like big-name concerts that are around the state. They have five scheduled for that. And that next July 3rd, there's going to be a parade in Philadelphia, big-time parade. I think it's a national televised July 3rd. And every county can submit an entry. I think two entries, actually. So we have ideas on our committee of what we would, you know, want to possibly enter in that. So if you have any ideas, you know, reach out to me. One other, you know, initiative that I really have been pushing or want to do, I want to produce a booklet that has community highlights. Go to each of our, you know, communities in Carbon County and, you know, historical sites or whatever. Have that put in a booklet. Times News, James Logue is kind of working on that now, so it's in the works. Also have a calendar of events in, in that booklet. Anything else? An essay contest, poster contest, that is another idea that, you know, our committee is working on. And so we would like to, you know, maybe highlight that in the booklet. So that will hopefully come out sometime early next year, and it would be, you know, accessible to any, anybody that wants it. And of course, the whole passport idea, you know, we've been talking about that and sort of working on that. That would be where, you know, you would visit certain sites or festivals or whatever throughout the county and get a stamp, and then, you know, you'd be eligible for, for a medallion or a prize, or, or whatever we decide to do. Okay, so I, I think that's pretty much, you know, does anybody have a question? Please. You know, like I said, there's, yes.
Can I just let you know that I had spoken to Jane Foyer regarding the Liberty? I'm Jen from Weisport Event Committee.
Oh, right.
And we're having a Weisport Crisp Air Festival in October, and he had mentioned about having the unveiling of the bell at that time. So would you be able to get in contact with me, and we can figure something out if we have to?
Yeah, please, please give me your number. Yeah, because that's one thing that we did bring up several times, you know. And we didn't know if, I think it's October 3rd, 4th, 5th. We weren't really sure if the bell would be, you know, now that it's delivered, you know. I'm hopeful that that would be.
Idea to.
A, a great time. That would be perfect, yes, yes. So we're gonna keep working on that and getting that done. Yeah, okay, okay, thank you. Anybody? Oh, 70, no questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You've got to good work.
Thank you. Busy. Gonna get busy, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Marlin, also. Okay. We're ready?
Okay, our next item is the Report of Executive Sessions Held.
There was one Wednesday, August 13th, at 10:00 a.m., and it was to discuss personnel.
Department reports, item number 25484, the Budget Transfers.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Item number 25485, Supplemental Appropriations.
Motion, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Item number 25486, Expenditures, the Payroll.
Motion to ratify, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Number 25487, Loan Number Two to Children and Youth.
Motion to ratify, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Item number 25488, Expenditures, August 14th.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yeah.
Number 25489, Expenditures, August 21.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Number 25490, The Capital Projects Fund.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Arner? Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Number 25491, The Treasurer's Reports.
Motion to approve the Treasurer's Report, as submitted, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
We will now recess. We will now go into Salary Board, reconvene. I think we were sitting in recess, correct?
Yes. Guests, any guests?
I'm looking at two different, I have two different Salary Board things, I was just doubling. Now I got the new one, and I got the new one here, so I'm looking, I'm going, what's the difference here? Are there any guests concerning Salary Board business? I do have the new one, thank you. Nothing you heard.
The Report of Executive Sessions Held.
There was one August 14th at 8:45 a.m., and that obviously was to discuss personnel.
Next item, the Sheriff's. Changed the rate of one part-time security officer from $15.29 per hour, a grade III Step B, to $14.91 per hour, grade III Step A, effective August 25th, 2025.
Motion to change.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
The Animal Shelter changed the rate of one canine officer from $14.56 per hour, grade II Step B, to $14.20 per hour, grade II Step A, effective August 25th, 2025.
Motion to change the rate.
Second.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Changed the rate of one canine officer from $13.87 per hour, grade I Step B, to $13.53 per hour, grade I Step A, effective August 25th, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Elections. Established the position of one voter registration specialist trainee at $14.20 per hour, grade II Step A, effective August 25th, 2025.
Motion established, second.
Mrs. Herman?
Yeah.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
No further business?
That's it.
Okay, we will close out the Salary Board, and we will reconvene the Commissioners.
Okay, the next item is the Personnel Report for County Departments.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
The Acknowledgements for Courts and Row Officers.
Motion acknowledged, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed copies will be made available to address upon request. Item number 25494, a bid award for Lehighton Legion Post 314 Parking Lot Reconstruction.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Boards and Authorities, number 25495, the Pocono County's WIOA, a reappointment, Craig Zern.
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Arner? Mr. Note Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco? Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Pocono County's WIWA, a resignation, number twenty-five, four-ninety-six.
Motion accept resignation. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Children and Youth, number twenty-five, four-ninety-seven, agreements with the providers as listed.
Motion approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, four-ninety-eight, the Fourth Quarter Invoice Report.
Motion approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Correctional Facility, number twenty-five, four-ninety-nine, proposal from Howard Refrigeration and Air Conditioning.
Motion ratify. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
County Buildings. Item number twenty-five, five-hundred, roof replacement, Penn State, proposal from McColl's Brothers.
Motion approve and execute.
Second.
Second, no, go ahead.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Drug and Alcohol Commission, number twenty-five, five-oh-one, load and loan state budget pass in pass.
Motion to table this motion for further review. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Human Services, number twenty-five, five-zero-two, the State Food Purchase Program.
Motion approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
The Worker Protection Investment and Certification Form, number twenty-five, five-zero-three.
Motion approve. Second.
Mr. Honor? Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Insurance, number twenty-five, five-zero-four, the Harry Grant.
Motion approve or ratify. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Service Agreement, number twenty-five, five-zero-five, Rogers Clock.
Motion approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
The Solicitor's Report.
Thank you. With your indulgence, I'll present the first three together. Items twenty-five dash five-oh-six, twenty-five dash five-oh-seven, and twenty-five dash five-oh-eight are gazebo requests for live entertainment in Josiah White Park.
Motion approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
For Josiah White Park, item twenty-five dash five-oh-nine, a special activities agreement for use of Josiah White Park along with a banner and gazebo request for the Jim Thorpe Tourism Agency.
Motion to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation, item twenty-four dash five-ten, agreement between the County of Carbon and Jim Thorpe for a permit to host the Heritage Festival at Mock Chunk Lake Park.
Motion approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Resolutions, first is item twenty-five dash five-eleven, Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero-two-six, acknowledging the one hundred seventy-fifth anniversary of Saint John's Evangelical Lutheran Church of Mahoning.
Motion to adopt the resolution. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
And item twenty-five dash five-twelve is a resolution, Number twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, supporting, requiring the Pennsylvania Legislature and the Governor's Administration to reimburse counties for all interest payments on loans at the current federal rate.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
And I will second with a little bit of a statement about.
I was afraid of that.
No, I smiled. Without a budget, children and youth, aging, mental health, drug and alcohol, and other services that rely on state funding are going to fail. Providers are coming to us for funding to keep them going. Next, we will be doing anticipation note at the cost of the taxpayers. The county always covers the cost of unfunded mandates and state budget stalemate. It's time the administration and our legislators take responsibility for their constituents' welfare as the county commissioners of Pennsylvania do. Thank you.
I will also make comments, I was gonna save it for under Commissioners' reports, but Mike and I did attend the annual conference, County Commissioners, in Seven Springs this past week. Every committee meeting, I believe, every session, every outbreak, the business section that we had on Tuesday morning especially, was a rather, well, let's put it mild, not a heated discussion, but a discussion on the frustrations on behalf of the county commissioners on the lack of funding, the loss of interest of our funds that are sitting there, that we gather from the tax revenues to get us through the end of the year and that, we're losing interest all the time. The motion we made today tabled a DNA loan, two hundred thousand dollars. We're not too sure, we have to really start tightening our belts and the budget-wise to get through this year. I was here back in two thousand nine when we had a budget in pass and it cost us several hundred thou, wow, I shouldn't say hundred thousand, I don't recall offhand, but nineteen, or twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, there was a nine-month delay on passing the budget. And the Commissioners are not too happy about it. They took a vote on a resolution to invoice the counties or the state for lost revenues, et cetera, in this resolution that we passed. And it passed almost unanimously. The other resolution, and they will be sending out future letters to all our legislators and the Governor that we, you know, basically demanding that they go back to Harrisburg and get this budget settled. Huge cost to the, to the taxpayers and like Mr. Honor said, we have to, we already sent a letter out for children and youth that we cannot pay their providers that are giving the services to our children because we're gonna be running out of funds very soon. Aging Department, in particular, those are some of the top ones, drug and alcohol and all these other programs. And you talked about the children today and how we try to protect them and that. It's, you know, one of these people thinking in Harrisburg. I don't know, not all politics, there's a couple of different reasons, but we need them to go back to Harrisburg and get this settled. There are some there, but, you know, Commissioners, or not Commissioners, but Senators, Representatives, et cetera, they're out going about their normal life, going on vacation and everything else, when he, we, the counties, are suffering. And I think it's about time to get their act together and what the County Commissioners was said several times this past week, we're just asking you to do your job and get this budget passed. We're required by December thirty-first to pass a budget. Why can you get away with this all the time? So, that's enough, I think.
As fellow Commissioners have said, it is very frustrating and we did spend a beginning part of this week out in Seven Springs and this is not just a Carbon County issue, it is a statewide issue. This was a very long conversation about this resolution as to how it was worded. It, it was generated out of many small counties around the state and then eventually voted on. There will also be, and I'm not gonna tell you exactly that, but there's going to be a letter coming from C cap with an additional resolution that we will be adopting that falls on a much broader thing, but the biggest concern we have is, as you see, reimbursement. As we're giving this money and helping places stay afloat, we obviously don't have that money in the bank, so we're not collecting interest, which means our revenue that we are generating is going down. I want you to think about something. Has the state stopped collecting their revenue? And all of that money seems to be going somewhere. They're not spending it, but yet they're collecting interest. So you see where we tabled some issues here? Because of that, we are asking all our departments to kind of tighten up a little bit here to get through. I guess my frustration does fall mostly on the Governor because he is the leader. I mean, he should get everybody to the table. So I just have one comment to the Governor. I read earlier this week that he fixed unemployment because it used to take so long to get unemployment in the state of Pennsylvania and that he has cut down the time that you get your employment checks substantially under his administration. Well, if he keeps his nonsense up, we're gonna see how well that works because there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be filing for unemployment because we, we cannot, there is no way a county this size or smaller counties can afford to do that. And I am tired of hearing about SEPTA. Let's get it right. SEPTA hasn't raised their rates since two thousand and seventeen. I mean, you cannot put an entire state in every, all sixty-seven counties in jeopardy because of SEPTA. If you wanna talk about transportation, let's talk about transportation. You wanna talk about SEPTA, go to Philadelphia. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Now, call the board?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Not-
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
There will be more to follow on that, Dave. Guaranteed. Nothing further for the Solicitor's Report?
Any further business? Nothing. Commissioner Honor?
Well, I just wanna follow maybe a little bit, maybe a little more comments about the budget, but like, they don't realize that there's children and children and youth that are getting adopted that could stop that process. There's people that might be on their last leg of rehab that, and are we supposed to be the bad guy and stop that? And it's gonna come to that because we're not gonna have the money. I mean, it's not, and we're gonna be forced into not giving money. And, and how much money can we, can we give out? Like I said, we have to pay our employees and next thing, we're gonna wind up running out of money and then what are we gonna do with our employees in a month from now if we don't have the money? Because we're putting out a couple million dollars a month in either payroll or payments to everybody. And i-if we continue with this without that funding from the state, everybody's gonna be hurting and the entire county is gonna run out of money by November. Plain and simple. We cannot exist for another two months like this, no way. That's it.
Adding to that, back in the two fifteen, two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget years, the providers, the people that own these businesses that, the placement for the children and that, were taking mortgages out on their own homes to keep their businesses afloat, to keep those, those children in placement and provide the services that we're required to provide, but yet we lose all this interest. The people are not reimbursed for the loans they have to take out. So this is pretty serious and I would encourage all providers that are losing money to contact their legislators and the Governor's Office as well as those children that are affected. The families should also be contacting. The only way we're gonna get this passed in a hurry is everybody steps up to the plate like the County Commissioners Association and on a united front, let them, let them know in Harrisburg that we are not happy and we want action.
Mr. Sefranco?
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'd love to sound off about the budget, but you know, the reality comes down to this and I'm gonna give the taxpayers here in Carbon County something to think about. Beginning this year, the Carbon County Board of Commissioners took an eight-million-dollar tan. We worked extremely hard first half of this year because we figured in order to get where we needed to be, we'd be spending eight million dollars. County Commissioners, along with Row Office holders, Department Heads, County Administrator and everyone else, we managed to only spend four of the eight that was anticipated, which means we saved you through cost-cutting items, through watching our budget, four million dollars. We saved you four million dollars in interest payments. We saved you four million dollars in overpayments. So it goes on and on and on. That was a credit to everyone that works here in Carbon County. Guess what? Thank you. Governor Shapiro and both sides of the legislature were just eating that up in one month. We worked six months to get where we were at and get ahead and it's taken them less than sixty days to get rid of it all. I think today, when we did this final loan, another loan to children and youth, what were we close to, almost three million dollars?
One point five.
One point five to just children and youth and that doesn't include the rest that is all out there, so we'll probably double that up.
About half million every two weeks.
Half a million every two weeks. So a million dollars a month. So, just think about that. Now, on the positive side, because I like to end on the positive side, I'd like to tell you all to go to Weatherly this weekend if you get a chance. Weatherly is having their community festival. I think it's on Friday and Saturday, please check out Facebook. I always like to promote those community festivals. I know there's a lot going on with churches and everything else, but please get up there and support their community. The other thing I would like you to do is look around, check out some Facebook pages because if you look at Lanceford, Palmerin, even Beaver Meadows, Lee Height may even be in there, there's a lot of concerts that go on in their parks that they have in those areas, and some car shows and all that. So get up there, that they're all community events that go on usually on a Sunday evening. You may want to get a chance to get around there. And, and the reason I, I really push these events out all the time is because it is amazing what you get to learn about each community, but more importantly, what they give back to their community. These organizations that are raising funds there are saving you a lot of money. They really are because they give right back to their communities. And if they weren't there doing that and raising that money, if you think your taxes go up now, imagine if you didn't have those organizations out there giving back to the community and they deserve a lot of credit for all they do. So with that.
I forgot one thing to mention. I do wanna publicly acknowledge the Jim Thorpe Community Foundation. Last night, they presented a check for ten thousand dollars to the Carbon County Training Center towards equipment and training. This came from a golf tournament that they had back in June, early June, I believe it was, in a May. It was a great event. Uh, they raised ten thousand dollars. We gave the people that could attend yesterday. Uh, a tour of the facility, and they were certainly amazed that, you know, people have no idea what we have in training here in Carbon County. We got over ten thousand hours of training in this year so far as of the end of June. So uh, I would publicly thank the Jim Thorpe. Charity Foundation for everything they do, and they will be at the Heritage Festival with soup and that. So uh, they run three or four fundraises a year. And it goes, all goes to community organizations uh every year. So they do a fantastic job of fundraising, and it's all volunteer work. So please go out and support those people that are helping others.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Which one's next?
We'll do the election board first. How's that?
Sure.
Jen was quick to step up. Step up a quarter, Sarah.
The first thing on the agenda is approving minutes from the election board meeting held on July seventeen. Two thousand twenty five.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. No Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Are there any guests concerning election board business?
Nope.
And on to number three, the approval of new polling place. That is regarding the Memorial Hall. We're going to be taking the two from um the Fairview Hose Company and putting them back to Memorial Hall.
And they would be the?
Fourteen and fifteen. All right.
I guess motion approved.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. No Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Is there any election board business from the commissioners?
I would just like to make one quick report here. A real quick note is um, as Commissioner No Stein had noted, we were out in a commissioners conference this past week. And I did sit on the election reform, and then there were some resolutions that were brought before commissioners devoted on, which all ended up tabled. And one of those big resolutions was to begin early voting in the state of Pennsylvania. Concerns of the commissioners were, you know, do those voting precincts all have to be open thirty days before? Who staffs them? Where do you get the election workers? What are the costs? What is the security? Um, right now, everybody, we do a early mail in, but we do not do early voting. So there was a lot of concerns brought forth by the commissioners. There was a a big push. In the southeast quarter, southeast, yes, southeast corner of the state to go to early voting. But your smaller counties and a few larger counties, but most of your smaller counties throughout the state stuck together and said, hey, look. Let's face it, uh, Act seventy seven has been nothing more, nothing short of a disaster at times. Jen can tell you, we often look for direction from the state. Our solicitor can tell you that we're supposed to go to our solicitor, or a solicitor will tell you the state. So we don't even have the last one figured out. We are no way in favor of changing it yet again. So uh, there was, it was, it was defeated by two thirds majority.
Yeah.
And that resolution uh died for lack of a second, and it was sent back to committees that if we do any type of lobbying on the county side for early voting. There will be much more work done on it, and that we are requesting that if the House and Senate begin to debate that, that we have some representation on the floor.
And there was another motion as well on the floor for uh regarding elections to better clarify the uh. Decisions coming out of the Department of State. Right now. Called the Department of State on an issue. What do they tell you? Talk to your solicitor. You've got sixty seven solicitors, sixty seven different opinions. Come up, tell us which way it is. Take away the gray area, and that's the reason this was tabled. I sat on the Resolutions Committee. And both sides for and against this uh particular resolution that they passed. Until they get it squared away and get a better definition of how it's going to work, then we'll bring it back to the floor. But until then, it was tabled.
In other words, for Carbon County, get your mail in ballots on time. If you don't show up at the polls and go on the day of the election. And the mail ins will be counted that day also. Other.
There you go. So I have.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Election board adjourned. Retirement board. Morning. Sarah, how are you today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, first on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held July seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman? Yes. Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. No Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
Any guests concerning retirement board business? Nope. There were no executive sessions held. Uh, motion to ratify warrant July checks numbers four one two zero three to four one two one four. And July direct deposit numbers seven zero three two eight eight seven to seven zero three 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 one two.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman? Yes. Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. No Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Sefranco?
Yes.
July activity report. We had three retirement refunds, three superannuation retirements. Two deceased on behalf of the retirement board, we would like to send our condolences to the families of Barry Straub and Marion Beatty. Disbursements for July, monthly benefits was five hundred twenty three thousand, six hundred eighty nine dollars and eighty nine cents. Option four, a hundred forty four thousand, nine hundred fifty five dollars and eleven cents. Refunds, twenty three thousand, five hundred four dollars, thirty three cents. For a total disbursement of six hundred ninety two dollars, one hundred forty, I'm sorry, six hundred ninety two thousand, one hundred forty nine dollars and thirty three cents. Portfolio value as of July thirty first was ninety four million, two hundred eighty six thousand and eighty one cents. No correspondence were received. Anything for the solicitors report?
Nothing to report.
And today we have our investment manager, Sarah, with us.
All right. Good morning. It's nice to see everybody. Um, we are going to go to On Your Books Exhibit Two, page ten. And we're going to talk a little bit. About the market. Um, and it's ever changing now, but when we look at this, we've got to remember this is through the sixth quarter, six thirty. And we look at what happened with the U.S. economy rebounded in the second quarter with real GDP growing at an annual rate of three percent. Net exports were a large contributor to growth. Um, a large part of that is that the dollar's weak, so it's um. Our exports are a little bit cheaper right now. Um, and then we talk a little bit about how that GDP on the top of that chart, you can look that year over year where it is. And the data indicated um growth for the first half of two thousand twenty five was only one point two. Percent um well below the two point eight growth that we had last year. So we know that the economy. Is starting to feel some of these tariffs. Now, when we look at tariffs, you go back and you look at. Um, where the tariffs are at the bottom of page ten. And you can see inventory of goods. Tariffs revenue surged during the quarter, generating twenty seven billion in June alone. Which was more than six percent higher the year earlier. So we look at when the tariff news comes out. So look at that chart, and you look at the top and look at. Four oh eight twenty twenty five, which is right there in the purple. And you can see that that we know is when the market really in April struggled. You know, we had the market back to back down, eight hundred, down a thousand. And then we saw it kind of picking up, probably because. The stockpiles have since fallen but remain four percent levels from a year. Earlier as of early July. So what's been happening is we know tariffs are at about eighteen percent. Right now, which is the most tariffs since like the nineteen thirties. If tariffs goes up, we know that things are going to become more expensive, and then we've got this juggle with the consumer there. Um, so what happened was everybody started to stockpile and making more things more expensive. We go to the next page, and we look at the U.S. economy, and we look at what's going on about non. Farm payrolls, and we've actually seen what's happened is that we've seen these kind of um. Retract a little bit. In July, they only added seventy three. And unemployment ticked up slightly to four point two percent. And you can see um where we look at changes in the non-U.S. um thing. Look at the change of two thousand twenty five. So really, healthcare has been driving the way of that, and we look at what's going to happen on the impact of economic growth. About eight months after the implementation of um the estimates the tariffs impact inflation. And we talk about the non-U.S. uh. The June non-farm payrolls were a hundred forty seven thousand. So what we're doing is we're starting to see unemployment kind of tick up a little bit, and they're not adding jobs as much as we wanted to. Um, and then we get to short term interest rates at the bottom, and this is very interesting. The Fed has, you know, we know at the beginning of the year, we talked about the Fed coming out, and they were going to do cuts. And then that kind of uh tailed off, and the Fed came out again and said they're not going to raise top uh. Cut um, the Fed rate cut. So what happened was it's the first time that two dissented. Meaning that the both the board is not completely on the same page. We know Powell's done at the end of the year, so you know, some people are saying that kind of says that there's not going to be that much more. Of where we know the Fed's going to go, because once he's done, a new Fed chair is going to come in, and they're going to set their policy. We are looking that what's happened is you've got sluggish. Um, you've got elevated prices, you've got sluggish employment, and we kind of look at that as a double whammy, meaning stagnation, which. Uh, the economy slows while prices rise. If that starts to continue to go, the it's eighty six percent that they will cut in September. Now, some economists are saying they're not going to cut till next year, and I think that this data just keeps coming out. One week we get some data in about the economy, oh, they're definitely cutting rates. Then we get another week, and we're like, they're absolutely not cutting rates. So I think it's kind of stand back. It would be good for the market to see a rate cut at least once this year, and now that they're expecting it, the market will not like it if they don't get it. If you look at the global economy, we know we are a global um economy. One of the things that really has happened, as we talked about last quarter, is Germany put five hundred billion euros back into the economy. And when Germany does that, it usually accelerates economic growth, and we'll see that. Your global equities, your international equities had a really nice quarter. We also know the European Central Bank cut rates for the eighth time over the past year in June, lowering the deposit. Facility rate to two percent. Remember when we got there? And then they raised it. So we're hoping that now that they're there, they're not going to do what we did and turn around, just keep raising it, raising it, raising it too fast when you cut it too short. And then we look at um. We'll go to page thirteen, and we talk about what has happened in the U.S. uh equity classes. So U.S. equities this quarter did eleven percent. For the trailing twelve months. Um, it did fifteen point three, and you can see everything was positive except for commodities were down three point one percent. And we know that some of that is related to what has been happening. Oil's been um a lot cheaper, energy related commodities, so large parts of the decline in oil prices. And we talk about international bonds had a great time. Global infrastructure, remember you decided to go into that a couple of years ago. For the trailing twelve months did seventeen percent. And then regionally, returns showed that U.S. equities modestly underperformed developed non-U.S. equities in emerging markets. And that's strongly from the U.S. dollar being weakened. There any questions so far? Let's go to page fourteen, and we're going to talk a little bit about what happened. We can see consumer discretionary was still up twelve percent. The consumer is still spending. Nothing has stopped the consumer, which is really kind of upholding this market in several ways. But we've also looked at what has happened with recovery with the S and P five hundred. We went into a bear market in April, and that is why your quarter performance is unbelievable for that quarter. We went into a bear uh market, and in fact, the S and P five hundred index saw the fastest recovery. Fifty five trading days in the last seventeen years of a fifteen percent decline. So what does that mean? It means there's a lot of volatility. There's a little bit of a media drive. You know, if you hear tariffs in the news. All of a sudden, the markets, um, you know, oh my goodness, what are we going to do? Tariffs will have an impact on this market. What impact it will have, we are not sure, but it will definitely drive up um. Possibly the consumer not being able to spend as much if it keeps going. One of the things that we've seen about um. AI is that as. Uh, China came out with a much cheaper AI, and that will have an effect down the road. And we talk about unemployment, we talk about AI. Microsoft cut three percent of their entire workforce this year. A large part is because AI can start taking over those jobs. So we're going to start seeing that magnificent seven, which has been driving the market. Make a change. Let's go look, and this is where it's very important to understand when we go talk about performance. Your managers. Have a hard time outperforming their benchmark right now because of this market. We call the magnificent seven are driving the market. You can look on page fifteen, look at that um. Chart. So when we look at this uh S and P five hundred index breakouts, the number of stocks at all time highs. What's important to remember is that we go to look at that line that's highlighted on six twenty six, twenty twenty five. Only twenty two stocks have made all time highs. Very, very concentrated. Nvidia's got more market cap than the Wilshire twenty five hundred. So it's very hard for some of these companies to outperform their benchmark when you've got this concentration. And we know that um it will eventually kind of come back down probably in two thousand twenty seven. So. It's very important to now remember that ten companies in the S and P five hundred now account for a record thirty eight percent of the market cap and thirty percent of index profits. So looking back, you know, your managers, we don't want them just to be in those seven stocks. We want them to be diversified. We know um growth outperformed value, and you know, we take a little bit of a value tilt. Remember, your number one goal of this pension fund is meeting its actuarial assumption. If you continually do that, and you put your ADC in there, and ten years' year will keep your funding where it is. Are there any questions on the market? All right, let's go to the next exhibit tab three. We'll go to the portfolio. Overview. And. At the end of June thirtieth, uh, you were at ninety four point three million. You had a net investment gain of uh sixty one million with a return of six point nine. For the trailing one year, you returned eleven point five and had a gain of ten million. And since inception, I think this is a uh interesting number. We'll talk about this a little bit. Since Pierce Park Marquette's been here, the fund has annualized return of nine point one, while surpassing. Your actuarial assumption and a net investment gain of ninety six point three million dollars. And I think that's important because this board has walked tirelessly and making a lot of asset allocation changes that have really benefited the fund. Positive attribution with your manager DFA, global manager WCM and Dodge and Cox. And real estate starting to kind of, we're starting to see the tick up in real estate. Negative is U.S. Equity Manager GWK, and we switched from global manager WCM Mutual Fund into their C uh CIT. Um, looking ahead, we're going to make some changes in global equity. So what we did was we fired Artisan. Last quarter, we took them down to. Two point five percent, put in WCM. To two point five percent and thought they would work very well together. Artisan had portfolio management changes, so we just fired them. Because once you start seeing performance going down and you see portfolio management change, um. We're no longer thinking that, you know, that's a good investment to have. They have done very well in the past. Um, we just thought it was the better thing to do, and especially in this type of market, we want to see our managers working well with the volatility in the market. Doesn't mean they have to outperform their benchmark, but they have to be doing what they're supposed to be doing, what we deem them. So when we build these portfolios, they're all working together. Um, we also had. WCM came and created a CIT for us, so we lowered um the investment costs for them. Now GWK, we're going to look at their performance. We are actually, we have them reviewing the performance, getting us updated weekly. We've just done three meetings with their portfolio management team. They have since inception for many counties like yourself have done very well. It's just when you have gotten into them. They have not outperformed um, and we are looking at them. We actually talked about them at um the OCIO. Word meeting last week, so our hands on it. We have no issue about firing anybody, but we think that the current market conditions is that they should come back. Being a small mid-cap manager is very hard when you are a smaller company competing against what's driving the market. And I want to take you very quickly to um tab twenty three. I think what's really interesting is about five years ago, you voted to do OCIO. And since then, we've had a year of double digit down negative, and you have um outper. Done nine point five percent annualized and have had a gain of thirty nine point six million. So that was a really good decision the board made, and I think it's been able for us to act really well with getting rid of managers and and making sure that it's um also. You're not having the market rebalance yourself. We rebalance every month back to target. Are there any questions so far? Right, so I gotta find it on this page. All right, let's go to page thirty two. Two. All right, page thirty two, we look at how your U.S. equity composite did, and it did trail. Um, the quarter, and that was primarily because of GWK. They have come back. Um, you can see since we put them in in June twenty twenty, so that's midway down. They have annualized ten point three versus eleven point nine. That number would have been a lot higher versus the benchmark. But they have just had a tough twelve months. Global equity composite, you can see Dodge and Cox, that's, oh, sorry. About that. That is page thirty three. You can see they've done eight point one versus five point eight. Year date fourteen point seven versus ten point nine. These are your alpha. They do extremely well in this market. You can see Artisan, which is gone now. Did eleven point three for the month, and then MFS Low Volatility is a great active manager, especially in this type of market. They did six point five versus three percent. They have done ten point seven versus nine point three, and uh five years, they've done twelve point three versus eight point four. And then WCM Focus Global Growth, which we put in in March twenty twenty five, for the three months, they did seventeen percent versus seventeen point three. Since inception. Since inception, they've done ten point two versus nine point three. Remember, you've got to look at a manager three, five, and seven years. We look at, at the bottom of page on your non-US equities, DFA Emerging Market Core, which we put in in April twenty twenty-four, has done well for you in the three months, twelve point seven versus twelve. They've trailed slightly thirteen point nine versus fifteen point three. And this is where we really have to understand the benchmarks. You can't just go flip like we used to and say, what did my manager do versus S and P five hundred? It's a very complicated market, but they're still doing very well. Since we put them in over a year ago, they've annualized fifteen point three. We'll turn the page to page thirty-four. Defensive Equity has done five point three versus five point nine. And year-to-date, they've done three point six, but for trailing one year, they've done ten point one. Real Estate, so real estate has started to come back. Morgan Stanley has done a nice job for you. Year-to-date, they've one point five versus one point seven. And they've really held their own when we knew that this market was very, very tough for them. Remember, twenty twenty, we looked at what happened with office buildings. We looked at how they had to completely reallocate everything that they are doing. And for three years, they were only down three percent versus six point two. And since inception, they've done four point four versus two point six. That's, they give you a great dividend and you know how much you're got going out and benefit payments every month. You also need to, why we did real estate and infrastructure, it took some of the volatility out of the market. It also pays you a good dividend. Infrastructure was two point six versus one point six. We look at year-to-date, five point nine. And then one year, your infrastructure did twelve point six versus five point seven. Remember, we funded that from real estate as well. And since we've put that in, it's eight point five versus six point five. You look at US income, fixed income, Sees McKee was right on the market. That's at the bottom page thirty-four. Year-to-date, they've done four point one. I think this is really interesting. Go look at the five years. Look at how fixed income has really not been giving you those returns. So those asset allocation changes did very well. And since inception, for the fifteen years, they've annualized two point five versus two point three. You have to have fixed income in. Remember, we took down the allocation of fixed income to twenty percent, and that has really worked out well for you. Are there any questions? I think you're in good shape. You know, it's nice, you're at seven percent year-to-date through July. And remember, all those numbers that you see are net-net, net of our fees, net of all your managers' fees. So that's your true return. And going forward, we know it's going to be a fairly difficult market. We're going to watch tariffs. We're going to also watch a lot of the data coming out. We're going to watch the Fed and what they do. And I think it'll be very interesting to see who the next Fed chair is going to be. Because then we'll have an idea of how that policy is going to be directed. And we'll be able to kind of look back, not that we can look into the future and say, we think this is what the market's going to do. But we'll have some idea on what it's going to set for policies. Are there any other questions? Why don't I thank you? And it's great to see everybody.
Well done.
You have anything for new business or old business? Any further business?
Your turn. Okay. With that, we will order the question and answer period. We'll start in the back with TV thirteen.
So, you know, Greg talks a lot about the budget. So we say, um, can you guys, like, you said you met with the other county commissioners earlier this week?
Yes, we. Well, we were at a C cap conference, which is where all, there's sixty-seven counties in the state of Pennsylvania. And commissioners from throughout the state all gathered together to discuss issues that are affecting county government. From EMS to where, you know, emergency management, your children and youth, your Office of Aging, to the policies that are being presented and to the state and the House. And when we got together, the overwhelming discussion, while you may be sitting down and say you're going to talk about children and youth, it reverted back to the budget. You sat there and you talked about EMS or in your county, it reverted back to the budget. So everyone is, every, every county, large or small, is greatly affected by cash. Because what you need to realize, and this was what we all heard, is right now is that at the time when all counties would have the largest amount of money in their accounts, meaning taxes have been paid and everything that's, you know, basically eighty-five to ninety percent of your tax revenue has already been, come into your county. There's always, I think we have like a seven to ten percent that go uncollected every year that you have to eventually go through sales and all that. But roughly ninety percent of everyone's tax money is in. So the accounts are at their largest that they're going to be, and it's where counties can generate revenue off of that interest. And by taking that money now and having to pay, needing to pay for other services, it depletes the revenue source of the interest on those counties. No matter how big or small, it's all relevant to the number. So out of that, everyone is very frustrated by the lack of, as Commissioner Honor had said, those three, four, three areas, I think you specifically stated, that cost the county money every single week, every single month. Commissioner Notstein mentioned how about every two weeks, we have to come up with half a million dollars. That's real-time money. I don't care if you're collecting interest on ten dollars or ten million. It's, it's still interest. It's all relevant to the, to the number out there. On our side, it's a little bit more because that extra revenue here in Carbon County helps pay for some of the three percent raise. We're going to have a cost increase in healthcare. We're going to have other lighting, water, sort of operational costs that go up. That we use that additional revenue that we were able to generate through interest to offset those increases. When that revenue is not being generated, the state and your governor is basically telling you, I'm not raising your taxes, but the county will. And the counties are saying, no, we're not. We're tired of that. You want to stand out to us, you're not raising taxes, but you are. You're raising and you're forcing county commissioners' hands to do that. And the smaller counties, we understand mass transit, we understand transportation. But when it comes to constantly throwing SEPTA up, I've never ridden a SEPTA bus in my life. I've used the roads and the interstate and, yeah, okay, we all benefit from that. But why are you holding an entire sixty-seven counties up because of a few around, you know, Philadelphia area? I have nothing against Philadelphia. I mean.
They haven't raised theirs fees since two thousand seventeen, but yet every year we have to increase our fees or affairs for the people that ride the system. So why are we supplementing them more than what we're getting back in return from the state? We're sending more money to that system than what we're getting in the rural systems.
And if, and if you played both sides of the table, and I'm not here to play both sides, I'm here to get a job done. If, if we sat up here every week and fought and argued and debated, we get nothing done. That, that does not benefit the taxpayers of Carbon County. So we, we need to work, do we agree on everything up here? You may think that, but we sit down at three zip, but I got news for you. That doesn't just happen. And you see them both smiling, trust me. It's, I get two guys that are pretty iron-headed at times. But you know what? We work at it because we make sure that the bills get paid. The staff works together. We all get it, we air it all out. We have the debate and we come in here and we make sure we vote. What's frustrating to the commissioners is when everyone seems to be going about their life. Like, well, there's a budget problem, but let the county worry about it. Well, that, that's not sitting with the County Commissioners Association at all.
They don't go back until what, September eighth? I forget if it's the Senate or the House that goes back and the other one doesn't go back till later in September. So they're not even in Harrisburg now dealing with the issue.
Do you think that by the next time they meet, they'll have a decision on the state budget or you have none?
Well, here's what we were told, and we'll throw this out there. It'll be done by mid-September, well, maybe October. We hope it's done by Christmas. That's, I mean, all I know is the three of us have to have a budget ready by December thirty-first. And if we don't have that budget ready, boy, it's, and it's like, and I can tell you that the three commissioners here know that the month of December, those last three weeks, we clear our schedules, there's no personal time going anywhere. If we have to do some Christmas shopping, guess what? You're not getting a present this year because we get, our present is to get this budget done. So that's, that's kind of how the commissioners have to operate. And if we have to operate like that, so does everyone else.
I'll reiterate what I said earlier. This affects every individual, every taxpayer in this county and the state. So I encourage everyone to contact your legislators and the governor's office. That's the only way we're going to get it passed earlier. Force them to the table, force them to do their job and get it done.
This kind of comes down to a simple leadership problem. Lead or get out of the way. It really, it's that simple. And, and you can blame Democrats, you can blame Republicans, you can blame whoever, but the governor's the governor. I mean, I'd love to fly all over the, I mean, could you see if every day there was a fire in Zuman Hill? There's a fire in Esconahouthing, there's a police problem in Lehigh, and there's an issue going on. And the three commissioners showed up for a photo op. You know, it gets down here, nothing. You know, get the job done. That's, I mean, we could pre-show.
I think one thing too, we have very good taxpayers. Our taxpayers pay on time. I mean, it's like, it's unbelievable how much money we get in for the first couple of weeks of the year. I mean, with the, when the payments are due. I mean, people help us out by paying like that. And is that going to put that in jeopardy? You know, people are going to get tired of it.
The one NAD that we did not mention, which is greatly affected by this, is our school district. They're greatly affected as well.
I mean, you need to understand is while everyone else is finding a way to spend or save money and keep people working and pay our bills, the state's still collecting money, just not spending it. I'm not saying they have to spend money, but get the money out, you know? And then the other thing is, you'll hear this too, well, what we're going to do is try to come together and get what they call a bridge. And they're going to pay out money that should be paid out, but there'll be no official budget there. So now here's the problem with that. The commissioners don't know where to go forward. Because we don't know what next year's budget holds. We just know that we got the funding for now, but we don't know where we go next year. I'll give you a good point, and I bet you nobody picked up on it too, but I'll say to it right now. Remember, we were going to talk about the child program? It's supposed to be talked about, you know why it's not being talked about today? There's a couple of issues. I'll give you number one issue. We don't have the money right now to make that commitment. There's some issues with the, with the contracts and things that need to be worked out there. But there's no way until everything's worked out that this county can afford to make a twenty thousand dollar commitment for the next twelve months until we know that money's definitely going to be there. There's other issues too that we're working through in a solicitor, but nobody picked up on that. But that wasn't on the agenda today. It's, we don't know. We really don't. And I mean, here's other issues in Bobble, you know, that we have to work through. But that's one of the key issues that the commissioners are concerned about as you're working through, is where do you get the funding? And you go to the school district and the school district's telling you the same thing. We don't have the money either.
We're going into our budget season. So how can we plan twenty twenty-six budget if we didn't even have a state budget and know what we were going to be getting towards children and youth and all these other agencies? How can we plan a budget without that state budget being in place?
And I, and finally, I'll say this, you're going to hear this. Well, you do know that there were federal cuts. Okay. Understand that, that happens. Well, then adjust your budget accordingly and pass your budget. If they make the cut at the federal government and the state makes the cut at their government, then the county commissioners have two decisions. Either we find the money to fund it or we cut it. Trust me, we'll make that decision. We'll look at each and make those decisions, but you can't just leave us in limbo. And that's where we sit right now.
What they have going on, all the events and fundraisers that have gone on, the Liberty Bell that got shipped in. I didn't know if you guys had any comments that you wanted to share about it.
Well, I, I think that it was privately paid for. I think that's, that's one key factor. I mean, I think the Liberty Bell was like ten, ten thousand dollars, am I correct? Ten, ten thousand dollars. And so the fact that they were able to go out and find someone to sponsor that, that, that's, that's awesome. I think by putting it in Weisport, really, that's, let's face it, that's where the Liberty Tree is. There was Fort, there's a whole bunch of history to Weisport. I mean, we had an Olympic gold medal athlete from Weisport. So I think by putting it in, in the Liberty Bell there.
Get the well.
In the well, yes.
The well that Wayne and Ben are friends.
Boy, it just don't stop today, does it? No, no. It'll pay too. But I, I think when you look at that, it was a very wise choice. And I think what's nice is, I mean, there's a lot that happens here in Jim Thorpe, a lot that happens in the county seat. But Carbon County, and we can all agree that it's more than just Jim Thorpe. There's a lot of strong history around this county. And the fact that the committee, which is a group of people from all over the county, came together and found the need to put it in Weisport. I mean, I'm very happy to hear that.
And Weisport's really stepping up that a plate too.
I think they came up with a great slogan, Weisport, why not? I just think that's just awesome. You know, why not Weisport? I just, I love that. Anything else?
I'm waiting today for an estimate. And once I get some, then I could provide something to you, but we're just waiting for the estimate right now. And there was a report, but we're waiting to see what comes out of the report from the estimate, what has to be done. Because there's numbers in there and we're not doctors to read what Humming, Millam, whatever is in it. So, so I'll keep you updated on that.
Jared.
There's nothing.
Amy would have found something. You were at a tough meeting.
I beat a dead horse, but, um, it was like largely cover school districts. Yeah. These last, you know, we can make it three months, we can make Jim Thorpe last night, same kind of thing. I know he tabled like carbon Monroe Pike today. How long can you go avoid those kinds of decisions? Before it gets, or if it does go to Christmas.
It's going to start.
How long can you go?
I think when you first, let's talk about Carbon Monroe Pike. There's three counties that are involved there, obviously. And we're going to sit down, we have a jointer meeting early next week with all three counties. And we're going to sit down and see what the rest of the, you know, what obviously Monroe and Pike are going to be doing and what stance they're going to take. We do have an agreement with all of them, and that has to be really looked into as to how that funding gets done and gets taken care of it. Because the reality of it is there is if Carbon Monroe Pike run out of funding and they don't get their funding, then you got another issue that you're dealing with. So I mean, that's something that the three counties and how far out can we go? And I do know that we did meet with children and youth, I'll jump to that one. We sat here with the director and we asked her to notify all the providers that they will not be paid. So what we're looking right now is to try to keep what's there afloat and keep the salaries and benefits and everything else there. But if you have a contract with children and youth, realize you're being told right now that you might not be paid or you won't be paid, and now you got to go out and float alone. So I mean, there's, how long is that going before they dispute, get into a contract dispute that they got bills to pay? The same will happen with Office of Aging. I can tell you, without going any further into other commissioners, but the three commissioners here have focused our attention on children and youth because we obviously don't want any children out there being abused or anything going wrong there in the Office of Aging. Our senior citizens need to be taken care of. They don't deserve to be part of this. So there's meals and a lot that has to be done there, needs that they need with their Medicare and all of that, that we will not see the children or the elderly. Unfortunately, those who are between the gap, I don't have an answer for you right now. I, I really don't. But that's our biggest concern.
Yeah, and even with like Carbon Monroe Pike, it's mental health and human services. They're sort of like sitting on a double-blade sword because they're getting from the state and they're getting from Medicare. So they don't know what is going to be cut from Medicare and what is going to be cut. And to tell you what, I think the last meeting that we had with them, you have all these providers. I think you have a thousand providers that they're paying through the whole thing, through the whole system. And what happens if fifty percent of them quit or go under? How would you ever recover a system like that? That's, I think it's. I think that I say the budget is a hundred and forty million or something for everything? Like, how, how, how do you, how do you, 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 you wouldn't be able to replace that? That's something that was built over years of time to get it to that point. So if it, I mean, I hate to say this, but if it collapses, is it going to collapse altogether? You're not going to, you know, I mean, these providers are not going to come back and go back in business again. And we're fortunate that some of these, that's. And we're fortunate that some of these that said, okay, we can hang on for a month or two that, you know, they'll wait for their payment. But I, I just don't, they got to get their act together. I mean, that's plain.
What happens to those people that are in the system now getting the treatment? They got to cut them off and start all over? They're going to relapse?
Like I said, somebody that's in, or like children and youth, you have kids going through being placed somewhere. And you can't finish placing them or, you know, wherever they're going, or I said, like the drug and alcohol. How do you, how do you stop somebody that went through rehab for a year? And now they got three months to go and you say, oh, you know what? Sorry, we're going to quit for six months and we'll start you back up in January. You're, you're, you're going to, that, then people are going to all fail. And where they got to today is, I mean, it's a crime to me that, and, and we always worked for that. We've always tried to help everybody in the entire county while we can. And now here we sit like.
I think the biggest frustrating is, and I can keep going on, but the commissioners and everyone worked very hard, hold a line in many areas and have done that. And this is, this is really hard to, to kind of take. It really is. And it's not, it's not, Wayne hit the nail on the, it's not fair to the taxpayers in Carbon County or throughout the state, but it's really. You know, and, and I'll be the first one to say that everyone out, you go out and everybody, government needs to cut, government overspends money. But you know what? They're right. I'm not going to sit and tell you not, but they are right. But they're, they're also got to realize there's services that have to be provided. So if you want to make those cuts and make those adjustments, that's, that's at a different level than I am. But at least in the meantime, tell us that the little spending or the levels of funding are going to remain the same so we can continue to function. Because we don't know, when you don't know what's good, if you knew something was going to get cut, you'd say, okay, but you know what happens if we funds? Good example, what happens if we fund the program and that ends up cut? And we signed a contract and now the budget comes out and it's cut. Well, do we still get the money? Because we assumed, we were told it was, no, we can't, we can't jeopardize the taxpayers, at least in Carbon County. And I know the other commissioners all feel the same.
More in two weeks.
Well, doing.
Cause I doubt highly it'll be passed.
It doesn't look good.
Surprise me and pass it.
And I think the hardest part too was a lot of what was being told to us was other ways to raise revenue. And, you know, and obviously the only way government raise revenue is to tax. And the overwhelming opinion out with the commissioners, and I can tell you from the commissioners everywhere from Carbon County is no. We are not going to be out there raising taxes to continue to raise revenue because the state's falling short. No. It's, if the state wants to cut stuff, let us know, we'll adjust accordingly, but we're not, we're not playing that game either. Anything else? Well, I thank you all. That was three very good meetings today. Enjoy your weekends. I hope the weather holds out.
Retirement Board stay here.
Retirement Board stay here. Oh. What do we do now?